All right, so I just want to say first of all, congratulations on sportsmanship and championship in representing not only Cobb County but Smyrna well in winning the 6A Soccer Championship. Just for a little background, Junior Gavin Banks, where's Gavin? Gavin scored the game's only goal with fourteen minutes and eighteen seconds remaining in the second half to give Campbell a 1-0 victory over Grayson in the Class 6A Boys Soccer State Championship game at McKeatran High School in Powder Springs. The victory gave Campbell its first state championship in soccer and its first in any sport in six years. The Spartans' previous state titles came in slow pitch softball in 1994, girls track and field in 2019, and Campbell lost to Kennesaw Mountain 2-0 last year in the championship game, but this year came back, prevailed, and won. So congratulations to all of you. I'm only going to read one of these because they all say the same thing. But the Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors you as a member of the Campbell High School Spartans Boys varsity soccer team. We congratulate you for your victory in Class 6A Boys Soccer State Championship on May 15, 2025. This win gave Campbell its first state championship in soccer and its first in any sport in six years. Your efforts exemplify excellence in athletics and demonstrate the teamwork that made this victory possible, this 24th day of June 2025. And this one is for Gavin. Congratulations on the winning goal. All right. Perro Capalletti. Jacob Crane. Thank you, Jacob. Sebastian Rett. Congratulations. Jaden Nova. Juan Bravo. Jonathan Edens. Henry Schlichting. There you go, I got it. All right, I can do this one easy. Eric Clay. There you go, Eric, there you go. And I heard you're the goalie, right? Good job. It takes a good goalie to win a game. There you go. David Somoywa. I didn't get that one right, that's all right, I'm sorry. Connor Hanlon. All right, and now we got the coaches. Cesar Vega. Manny Silvano. Rob Catlin. And the head coach Troy Conley.
I'm going to keep this as short as we as possible. I can sit here and talk for hours about this group of boys, this soccer program. I'm so proud of them, so proud of the program that we've been able to build. We have some more good things coming. There's some awesome things happening at Campbell High School athletically and academically. So looking forward to continuing the progress we've made with this program and look out for Campbell in the future.
Thank you. All righty, last but not least, if we can have those who are here as part of Shaw Temple AME, please join Commissioner Sheffield up front.
Hello, hello, how are you, sir? Good, it's good to see you again. Just step right here in my office and we can get started. Okay, whereas Shaw Temple was founded in 1890 in the Sweet Auburn Avenue neighborhood in Atlanta, Georgia. Since then, this house of worship has grown from a small urban church to one that serves urban and suburban families from metro Atlanta. And whereas the first AME Zion Church organized in Atlanta in Old Badgers Hall on Pittmont Avenue near Ellis Street. Many of its original members were from North Carolina. They worshipped in Badgers Hall for one year. The first trustees were brothers J.W. Hunter, Miller, Beatty, Tom Morrison, and Bob Bibbs. And whereas the church moved through various sites in the area during its 135-year history, eventually settling in Cobb County at 775 Hurt Road in Smyrna in January 2000. Regardless of the location, it served as a place where people from all walks of life could worship and connect to programs and ministries that foster growth in their spiritual journeys. And whereas Shaw Temple is the mother church of the Georgia Annual Conference and the leading congregation of the South Atlantic Episcopal Area. Shaw Temple has maintained its worship under thirty presiding bishops, thirty-three pastors. From this, the mother church of Georgia Conference, three societies started and evolved into vibrant congregations. Decatur AME Zion Church, New Life AME Zion Church, and Faith AME Zion Church. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the 135th anniversary of Shaw Temple AME Zion Church and salute its work on behalf of the metro Atlanta community during three different centuries, providing a place of faith for so many. This, the 24th day of June 2025.
All right, for this next presentation, may the gentlemen of Campbell High School men's soccer team that won the 2025 6A Boys State Championship, please join Commissioner Allen Upfront.
All right, so I just want to say first of all, congratulations on sportsmanship and championship in representing not only Cobb County but Smyrna well in winning the 6A Soccer Championship. Just for a little background, Junior Gavin Banks, where's Gavin? Gavin scored the game's only goal with 14 minutes and 18 seconds remaining in the second half to give Campbell a 1-0 victory over Grayson in the Class 6A Boys Soccer State Championship game at McKeatran High School in Powder Springs. The victory gave Campbell its first state championship in soccer and its first in any sport in six years. The Spartans' previous state titles came in slow pitch softball in 1994, girls track and field in 2019, and Campbell lost to Kennesaw Mountain 2-0 last year in the championship game, but this year came back, prevailed, and won. So congratulations to all of you. I'm only going to read one of these because they all say the same thing, but the Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors you as a member of the Campbell High School Spartans' Boys varsity soccer team. We congratulate you for your victory in Class 6A Boys Soccer State Championship on May 15, 2025. This win gave Campbell its first state championship in soccer and its first in any sport in six years. Your efforts exemplify excellence in athletics and demonstrate the teamwork that made this victory possible this 24th day of June 2025.
All right.
And this one is for Gavin. Congratulations on the winning goal. And just bear with me as I read each one and you just raise your hand. All right. Perro Capelletti. Jacob Crane. Thank you, Jacob. Sebastian Rett. Congratulations, Sebastian. Jaden Nova. Juan Bravo. Jonathan Edens. Henry Schlichting. There you go, I got it. All right, I can do this one easy. Eric Clay. There you go, Eric, there you go. And I heard you're the goalie, right? Good job. It takes a good goalie to win a game. There you go. David Someywa. I didn't get that one right, Dennis. That's all right, I'm sorry. Connor Hanlon. All right, and now we got the coaches. Caesar Vega. Thank you. Manny Savano. Rob Catlin. And the head coach Troy Conley.
I'm going to keep this as short as we as possible. I can sit here and talk for hours about this group of boys, this soccer program. I'm so proud of them, so proud of the program we've been able to build. We have some more good things coming. There's some awesome things happening at Campbell High School athletically and academically. So looking forward to continuing the progress we've made with this program and look out for Campbell in the future.
Thank you.
Alrighty, last but not least, if we can have those who are here as part of Shaw Temple AME, please join Commissioner Sheffield Upfront.
Hello, hello, how are you, sir? Good, it's good to see you again. Just step right here in my office. And we can get started. Okay, whereas Shaw Temple was founded in 1890 in the Sweet Auburn Avenue neighborhood in Atlanta, Georgia, since then, this house of worship has grown from a small urban church to one that serves urban and suburban families from metro Atlanta. And whereas the first AME Zion Church organized in Atlanta in Old Badgers Hall on Piedmont Avenue near Ellis Street, many of its original members were from North Carolina. They worshipped in Badgers Hall for one year. The first trustees were brothers J.W. Hunter, Miller, Beatty, Tom Morrison, and Bob Bibbs. And whereas the church moved through various sites in the area during its 135-year history, eventually settling in Cobb County at 775 Hurt Road in Smyrna in January 2000. Regardless of the location, it served as a place where people from all walks of life could worship and connect to programs and ministries that foster growth in their spiritual journeys. And whereas Shaw Temple is the mother church of the Georgia Annual Conference and the leading congregation of the South Atlantic Episcopal Area, Shaw Temple has maintained its worship under 30 presiding bishops, 33 pastors. From this, the mother church of Georgia Conference, three societies started and evolved into vibrant congregations: Decatur AME Zion Church, New Life AME Zion Church, and Faith AME Zion Church. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the 135th anniversary of Shaw Temple AME Zion Church and salute its work on behalf of the metro Atlanta community during three different centuries, providing a place of faith for so many. This, the 24th day of June 2025. Congratulations. You just don't look 135 years old.
Let me, first of all, apologize for being late. I hope heaven won't be like this when we get there, but I'm grateful for you, our Commissioner, and to the Board of Commissioners for recognizing Shaw Temple. We are glad to be a part of this community. It seems like only a few years ago that Bishop Hunter moved the church from Atlanta to Cobb, and since then, the church has grown tremendously, and I'm grateful to be their 33rd pastor. Been there about 10 years, it's a wonderful congregation, and we're looking forward to many, many more years here in Cobb. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our presentation portion of this meeting. We do have one public hearing, which we need to add to our meeting as a non-agenda item, which will take four-fifths vote of commissioners. With that, commissioners, I move that we add the following public hearing to this meeting. It is to conduct a public hearing for employment of professional services where contract fees will likely exceed $200,000 for landfill post-closure analyses for three closed landfill sites. So move.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Call of a question? Okay, thank you. The vote passes 5-0. With that, we'll go ahead and begin the public hearing portion of our meeting. I'll turn things over to Dr. Gibson to walk us through the site of.
Okay, good afternoon. Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager, Jotan Gibson, Public Services Agency Director.
Dr. Gibson, just pause a moment. Yes, for anyone that needs to leave at this time, please feel free to do so, and we appreciate you being here for our presentation portion of this meeting.
They're leaving because I came up here.
Exactly right.
They didn't want to take away from your shine.
Oh, okay, okay. I feel better now. I cleared the room.
There was a lot of support for our award recipients today. All right, you can continue. Thank you.
Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager, Jotan Gibson, Public Services Agency Director. In accordance with the state law, the Board of Commissioners is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $200,000 or more to employ an independent contractor consulting firm or to conduct an independent survey or study. This analysis would be of our three closed landfills, which are the Cheatham Road Sanitary Landfill, the County Farm Road Landfill, and the County Farm Drive Landfill. The comprehensive landfill post-closure analysis will provide us with information to address the appropriateness of our current post-closure care liability. We anticipate awarding a contract that could exceed $200,000. Notice for this public hearing was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on June the 6th, June the 13th, and June the 20th of 2025. At this time, we request that you hold the public hearing as advertised.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. For our public hearing, we'll take an unlimited number of speakers to address this matter and this matter only of this closure. Each speaker will have up to three minutes, and we will allot three minutes for an unlimited number of speakers, and again, it is for the closure analyses of these three landfills. With that, we'll open up the hearing for our first speaker.
Good evening, my name's Craig Harfoot. I, um, it's about consultants and $200,000, like I always object to that, but just for a little edification, I don't know if you all know what you do with closed landfills. Well, Westview Cemetery was a landfill. It can be turned into cemeteries, but the one on County Farm Road, you know, we were trying to do recycling there under Bill Byrne, but Olin shut that down. But if that was all just leaves, yard waste, whatever, it could have produced soil and it could have grown stuff on it. But, um, the, um, you know, it's amazing how people forget this stuff, but in the last hundred years, we dumped all kinds of nasty stuff in landfills, and it's like, prior to that, I was watching this series on a guy digs up bottles from the 1880s, you know, the army posts, whatever, they dug a hole, they used it, put the latrine stuff in it, they threw the bottles and the whatever was junk around there and ashes because they were burning stuff, you know, to keep warm, wood and coal, covered it up, used the land for growing stuff. It's, it's something I care about because when I left Florida and they overpopulated Florida, all the mountains in Florida were land created by just dumping, and Florida was flat, now they got mountains. And, you know, you can put pipes into certain kind of landfills and get methane gas and use it to power things. Might, well, whoever's going to look into that, that's something to consider over on County Farm Road because the county can have free energy to run whatever. And anyhow, I just hope that we learn to be smarter about, you know, how we deal with stuff in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker. Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Dr. Gibson, before you leave, just want to see if any commissioners have any questions for you. All right, thank you. We will now go to our first public comment, and I'll turn things over to our county attorney.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Excuse me, as the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for the speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all of the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County government. There is a timer on the podium that keeps track of your three-minute time limit. The first speaker is Lanny Skipper Bellmead.
While you're heading up, just want to let all of our speakers know to please state your name prior to addressing the board. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Lonnie Skipper, and I am an attorney that represents the Bellmead Condominium Association, and I do have some members in the audience that are from Bellmead, if I could get them to just identify themselves. So I am coming today because I just wanted to make you aware of an issue that is happening to the Bellmead Condominium Association in that a sinkhole has developed on one of the roadways. The sinkhole developed as a result of the stormwater system that runs under this roadway, which is maintained by Cobb. It has off-site stormwater that goes through this pipe to another location also off-site. In addition, we've had a little bit of dialogue about this, and the concern that has been raised to us is that the Bellmead roads are private roads. We wanted the opportunity to meet with staff and discuss this further, or the county attorney to discuss this further, because we have some information related to the ordinances that were in effect. When the subdivision was developed, those ordinances provide that all roads shall be public roads, and it was under that ordinance that the Platts were signed by Cobb County. So we have some concerns just that we wanted to raise, and we wanted to take this opportunity just to let you all know about it. As far as I know, only Mr. Allen had been aware previously, so we just want the opportunity to discuss this further with staff. Okay? And I do have a letter, if I could give it, and then a couple of pictures just of the sinkhole, just so you'll know what we're talking about.
I believe our DOT director is here, so just want to make sure that you connect with him before you leave. I don't know if you've met in person yet.
All right, I'll give him a card. I don't know which person.
Drew, if you don't mind, just raise, okay, he's.
Okay, I'll give him a card on my way out. And finally, I just wanted to say, say thank you. I'm a former holding county attorney, and so I understand how thankless this job can be, so I wanted to be sure to let you know I do appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Julie Stevens.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of the horse lovers and those who support the safety of our horses in Cobb. If you will please stand if you came here to support me, thank you.
Thank you, and just state your name once again for the record.
Julie Mayberry Stevens.
Thank you.
Okay, and I live on Wesley Chapel Road in Marietta, which is part of the original Mayberry Farm that was established in 1904 and has been a continuous operating farm in the Mayberry family for 120 years. I currently operate Mayberry Farm Equestrian Center, a horse boarding and lesson program adjacent to Mayberry Park. 16 horses are under my care and pasture boarded. My parents, Jim and Levita Mayberry, board eight horses on the north side of Mayberry Park, and my mom is actually here tonight. Some of you were there for the ribbon cutting of the beautiful park where many citizens of Cobb County enjoy seeing the horses. I come tonight not only representing our horses in my barn, but all of the equestrian facilities in Cobb County that struggle every year with numerous and random days and hours of fireworks exploding near our horses and even over our pastures. I ask you to consider taking action to ban fireworks within 200 yards of any equine facility as Cherokee County and the city of Milton did this past week as a result of House Bill 614, which was passed in the Georgia General Assembly and signed by Governor Brian Kemp on May 14th of this year. It authorizes local jurisdictions to regulate firework use in the vicinity of horses. I sent the video of that presentation to each of our Cobb Commissioners to your email and asked that you please view it in the future if you have not seen it. Cherokee County included a penalty of up to $1,000 and up to 60 days in jail, which will make it much easier to enforce. There have been many cases where horses are severely injured and even killed due to the chaos that fireworks create for horses. They are prey animals. It's in their very nature to be fearful and run when they perceive a threat. When they hear fireworks going off, it sends them into panic mode, just like it does veterans and dogs. They feel they're essentially under attack. They've run through fences, and some have suffered severe injuries to themselves, or they've injured humans who are trying to keep them calm. They also can call it from the stress, because my barn has a neighborhood that borders the entire pasture on one side and across the street on Wesley Chapel. Our horses are surrounded by constant blasting explosions over their pastures. People are now purchasing commercial-type fireworks that are not like the ones we used safely at home when we were young. We have to sedate the horses with medication that I purchased from my veterinarian, but it only works for two hours, and you have to do it an hour prior to it take an effect. And so when people shoot them on major holidays and an entire week after the holiday, Injun and Dewali holiday in the fall, along with random times during the year, giving injections to every horse and planning an hour ahead becomes impossible and unmanageable. Cobb County currently allows fireworks from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day of the year.
Ms. Stevens, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
No, you cannot do that under the rules. The next speaker is Jennifer Buck.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Buck. I too own a horse farm in Cobb County. Everything that Julie has stated this evening is 100% fact. I used to be a vet tech. I was also a guardian ad litem in CASA in the state of Delaware and Florida. Tried to do it here, but times conflict for training, so I'd just like to say I really do appreciate all your attention to this. This is something that is so stressful to all of us trying to plan. I literally have to put off a person from coming into my farm until possibly the 15th to 20th of July. I can't have a new animal coming in and being bombarded by fireworks in a new situation and a new farm. You know, it's just setting them up for disaster, and it's not going to be on me. So they're going to stay there, but I'm losing 15 days of business because I have to be a smart human, be a smart business owner, be a smart and caring, kind person. It would be so much easier if they, if people had to apply for permits, and when these big bombs go off, I mean, it's not just the animals that are scared, it's not just the veterans, it is your neighbors, whether they're older or they're younger, it's children, it's special needs children. This is a big problem here, and there's many other states that do not allow these bombs going off all year long. My neighbors do not know that we have a curfew of 9:00 p.m. They routinely go off until midnight, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, especially on holidays. It's out of control. We've had fires in houses in the developments around me from fireworks landing on roofs right off of, I'm off of Ebenezer and Blackwell Roads. So we've had a lot of big fireworks displays that have been going on. I know that there is a couple that have been very big over there in the past couple of years, but I know the police officers have been out several times. I will say that most of the time, they're done well, but you know, getting a heads-up or just having a little bit more of a hold on what's allowed and what's not allowed would be really great. I mean, you know, it's not just for the animals, it's kind of for everybody with me, and everything that Julie has stated is 100% truth. Like I said, I was a vet tech, I've dealt with horses that have had major catastrophic injuries, some even as far as death because of this. So, you know, I'd appreciate if you guys could listen to that, and thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it.
The next speaker is JT Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm JT Jackson, resident down in Cumberland, District 2. I first wanted to offer my appreciation to Director Russler and Commissioner Allen. At last, Board of Commissioners meeting, I mentioned two obstructions to the walk paths in Cumberland. Both have been handled since the time of that comment, so it's really good to see action being made. The runoff issue on the, towards the trailhead of, the runoff issue towards the trailhead of Bob Cowen Trail, that one did come back with the subsequent rain, but I did see that at least an effort was made to clean it up the first time around, and it looks like a more lasting fix will be needed there, but wanted to offer appreciation for that. One other area I wanted to address in Cumberland was the Cumberland Bike Share. It's really. It's really, really useful, just getting around the bike infrastructure in the area is great, and the locations of these stations are pretty good. There used to be one on the third base side of the Battery of the Braves Stadium, but that has been replaced. So if, you know, we could work with the Atlanta Braves to maybe bring that bike station back over there, that was a really important hub for workers and fans that wanted to ride bikes to the stadium. That's all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Johnson.
Well, I guess I should have worn my stilettos. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, here we go. So, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Melissa Johnson. I'm representing Vinings Village Homeowners Association and Vinings residents. I'm here to speak about the BioSolid Incineration Project. It's number 45 on the agenda, so you'll probably forget what I said by the time we get to it on the agenda, but, so the Vinings Village Homeowners Association strives to protect and preserve the quality of life enjoyed by Vinings residents with a focus on community zoning, sensible development, security, and environmental protection. We want to thank Cobb County Water System for the presentations made to Vinings residents regarding the challenges with BioSolid's disposal and the proposed incinerator upgrade project at the RL Sutton Water Reclamation Facility. Their staff have been very gracious and accommodating, and we do appreciate it. Many Vinings residents have expressed concern about potential health risks from BioSolid's incineration. While we understand incineration is the most cost-effective solution, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency would not have imposed stricter regulations in 2016 unless there were known risks. At the time, the CCWS shut down the incinerators rather than bringing the process into compliance with EPA regulations. As the Board of Commissioners is aware, the RL Sutton Water Reclamation Facility is located within a cluster of industrial plants, including the RM Clayton Water Reclamation Plant just across the river with two BioSolid's incinerators, Sterogenics Medical Sterilization using ethylene oxide, Waste Management's Transfer Station, CW Matthews Hot Mix Asphalt Plant, and the Georgia Power McDonough Plant, which has coal ash that everyone's aware of. A big concern is the potential for cumulative environmental and health impacts resulting from mixing combustion and other pollutants within this geographical cluster. In our effort to provide environmental safety assurances to the surrounding community, VVAHA requests the following: meet or exceed current EPA emission standards.
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm out of town.
You're out of time. Yeah, you see it there. The next, the next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Let's go ahead and take a quick, couple-minute recess, please. Thank you.
I tried to tell her to stick around and talk to you after.
Thank you. My name's Craig Harfoot, and I wanted to talk briefly about, and I've got three minutes, economic slavery. I mean, I was thinking about the whole history of Georgia. So Oglethorpe founds Georgia as a sole, no, as a trustee ship with a grant from the King to reform debtors from the London Prison. And, you know, they tried that, and these people were given some land and they worked it, but they never made a profit for the corporation of Georgia. So, you know, Oglethorpe's company. So they, with the South Sea Bubble and all that, the British East India Company, our flag, they started importing slaves from Africa. We know that. But this thing goes on and on, but, you know, the first thing that you find out in the Bible is about Joseph and his brothers sold them into slavery because they were jealous of them. So they sent them, you know, he ends up in Egypt, and then that whole story. It took Moses to get them out, you know. They got stuck there for over 100 years, and they were, they ended up slaves, but it was all during a famine. So it's interesting how these cycles go. We're in the middle of, you know, we had the Civil War, we had emancipation, then we got company towns. And you could, you know, it was a closed system, the coal mines and all, and a lot of blacks ended up in the North. So they were economic slavery again. Then the Federal Reserve comes, and we get loans, but, you know, come along about the time of student loans and the Vietnam War and all that, we end up with this portable debt till death with credit cards. And that economic slavery is global now. And I don't care what country you're from, what color you are, this is what the elites got in store for us. It's just, and now they want to go to crypto and all this other business, but, you know, the company towns had housing. The plantations had housing. And they've got to the point now where these elites, they got mega yachts and we got no housing. So, you know, it's time, the way we elect people, you don't want the money to elect your leaders because it all goes to them, and we're, we're all economic slaves. And we need to think about that. Thanks.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Can I give this to you guys for the record, and you give them a copy since we can't put anything on the slide? Good evening, Denny Wilson, District 4. And let me start by saying I am not here speaking on behalf of the city of Mabelton. I am speaking as an individual taxpayer that lives within the city of Mabelton, always kidnapped into the city of Mabelton. I ask you guys for a breakdown of the public safety or law enforcement numbers for the city of Mabelton, and you guys said that there, there were no such numbers. If you look at what I just gave you, this came from a report created by the former Finance Director in 2014 when they created the Six Flags Special Tax District. And you can see here, you guys have 735 responses from public services, public safety, for all apartments on Six Flags Drive. You have 237 from a senior apartment complex, which is 32.25% of all public safety calls in the area. The average cost per response was $184.06. This came from county records. Cost to Cobb County to provide public safety for all the apartment complexes on Six Flags Drive was $135,284.10. Cost to Cobb County to subsidize public safety for a public high-crime apartment was $43,622.22. So the cost savings to Cobb County over a 20-year life of the district was $2 million, I don't know how y'all, they came up with that number, but anyway, it was $2,705,682 based upon the 2014 crime figures of high-crime apartments is removed. If you guys did it in 2014, why can't you do it now? Because this is clearly, and I'll send you guys the original document tonight so you won't have to search for it, because I have it, you know, I did a public, I did a open records request when this was first done, and this came from the, the report from the open records request, and this was created by the county. So you guys have said here that the average cost per response, every time somebody, I guess, calls the police, was $184.06. So why can't we do it now? I mean, why can't you give Mabelton these numbers if you gave it to them in 2014? That's all I'm saying, is we just want to know that we're not being double taxed, and we just want to see that the numbers are correct. And if you give us that, I mean, we'll be fine. I mean, we, we just want to see it in, in print, is all we want. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that's the last public speaker for the first portion.
Thank you. Public comment is typically not a dialogue, but Ms. Wilson, we did have some fiscal analyses of public safety, and so I believe our public safety director is here this evening? Yes, if you don't mind connecting with her following our meeting. Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment portion of this meeting, and we are now at our consent agenda. The matters on consent, we're scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting and will do so afterwards. We vote on all of these items in bank or at the same time. Commissioners, we did have some administrative revisions to Agenda Item Number 18 with respect to the FTA Grant Program, 5307. Also Agenda Item Number 22 regarding Kaiser Permanente sponsorship and facilities management, Agenda Item Number 29 with respect to cost savings from completed fire projects. Pam, were there any other revisions I need to be mindful of? With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda as they have been revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second and discussion.
Yes, please go ahead.
I'm in opposition to Number 24.
Okay, that's with respect to a property purchase in Smyrna. Thank you. Are there any other, yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, I'd like to have my opposition to Agenda Item Number 24 noted as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Allen or Sheffield, do you have any comments? Okay, with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, noting Commissioners Burrell and Gamble's opposition to Agenda Item Number 24.
Second.
All right. And I think I already did the motion in the second, that's why you're looking in bewilderment. I just want to acknowledge the opposition, so no need for that to supersede the previous motion. With that, we'll go ahead and call the question. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. That now takes us to the regular agenda, and I believe our first subject matter is water.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. The Cobb County Water System recommends approval of a progressive design-build agreement with Crowder Construction Company in the amount of $5,305,172 for Phase 1 services for the RL Sutton Water Reclamation Facility solids handling project upgrades, program number T2031. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. At this time, we are requesting funding only for Phase 1 of the project. Phase 1 services consist of site investigations, preliminary engineering, design development to a 60% level, and preparation of a guaranteed maximum price to complete Phase 2. We anticipate bringing an agenda item at a later date, once Phase 1 is completed, to recommend approval of Phase 2 services, which would encompass completing the project's final design, construction of the proposed improvements, and startup and commissioning of the project.
Okay. I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Allen. Whichever you prefer.
Yeah, I'll, I move to approve Agenda Item 45.
Right, I'll second. Is there a discussion?
Yes. I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Director, for being open with the community as we move through this. The residents of this community, especially Vinings, and thank you, Melissa, for being here to speak tonight, are rightfully vigilant about what goes on in that community, as she laid out. This is the industrial triangle with coal ash on one side of the river, ethylene oxide on the other, asphalt, we've got a lot of things going on in that area. I know you and I have made conversations and talked about some of the requests that Vinings Village Homeowners Association is looking for, and you've agreed that we will do another community meeting with the vendor present to talk about making sure that the emissions levels are exceeding current EPA emissions for BioSolids and other matters. Also, some of the other issues around the permitting process, being able to review the air emissions permit application, and discussing how we can monitor continuously or otherwise the air quality in that area. So thank you for continuing to work with the community on this, and this is just the first step of getting the design, and then we look forward to progress with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Burrell.
Julie, what are the requirements for public hearings with regard to permitting through EPD or EPA?
So I do believe that EPA will hold some kind of... So I do believe that EPA will hold some kind of, they will open, like, for people to submit comments to them. There's not a, I don't believe there's a requirement for us to hold a public hearing, but we'll find out more of the details.
Yeah.
It's been a very long time since the water system has done an air permit, so we don't know 100% all the requirements, since it has been a long time, but that's why we're bringing a consultant on board to help us through that process and make sure that we follow all the steps.
Right. Yeah, I know there will be required public hearings for the community to speak and down the road, but this is just for the design and preliminary to get started, to get started. Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, EPA will have a virtual public comment period where they'll open it up online. You'll be able to submit comments online prior to the permit, and I'll make sure to also communicate that when that period opens up, but we're, that's going to be far down in the future, once we get through the design phase.
Correct.
Are there any other comments? With that, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That now takes us to the transportation tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Essler with DOT. DOT has just four items on the regular agenda for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement Number One to Project Number B2732, Task Order Number One, to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with RS&amp;H Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $17,016.18 for engineering design of Peach Hall Road Sidewalk. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you. This has been a long time coming. Thank you, Drew, for all your hard work on this. Motion to approve, Item Number 46. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking, under appropriate state law, authorize commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Peach Hall Road Sidewalk, Project Number B2732. Adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking, under appropriate state law, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Piedmont Road at Canton Road, Project Number B2312. Adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Once again, Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Just that this is part of the Canton Road Splosh Project for a right turn lane at Piedmont, I mean, on Canton Road onto Piedmont, and this is, was on the 16 splosh, but that money was used for another improvement at Shalaford in Canton, and now it's coming back, so it's long overdue as well.
It is.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Cumberland Parkway at Paces Walk in response to a sinkhole. Approve a contract with C.B. Matthews Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,154,558.95 for said repairs. Project Number B22176, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Just wanted to thank you, Drew, and the DOT team for responding so quickly to this issue, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at our Public Services tab. Yes, excuse me, Michael, if you don't mind just walking through the revision for this, I think there was a slight revision?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a revision of the district.
Okay, the district, yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I know you wouldn't know that. Thank you. For those of you at home, the proper district is District Three, not District Two.
Not Two, Three.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we have one item for consideration. Our item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve expenditures with W. E. Contracting Company Incorporated through Cobb County Master Contract Agreement for the Fuller Park ADA Project under the 2022 Park Splosh Program. This work includes adding an ADA accessible sidewalk from the parking lot to the tennis court. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve expenditures with W. E. Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $122,165.60 for the Fuller Park ADA Project under the 2022 Park Splosh Program. Authorize corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Director of Procurement to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve. Thank you, Michael.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. I believe that takes us to our second public comment.
There's no public that has signed up for the second portion.
All right, thank you. That now takes us to the Commissioners' public address, and we will begin with Commissioner Gammbrill once we have the slides queued up.
The wait is almost over. Smith Gilbert Gardens reopens on Tuesday, July 1st. Visit the City of Kennesaw's Botanical Garden, enjoy vibrant plant life, 31 sculptures and fine art displays. The Butterfly House is back, and that will be open on Tuesday, July 1st to August 30th from 9:00 to 3:00. Dog Days, bring your furry friend and enjoy the gardens together. This will be held on Tuesday and Saturday, June through December, from 9:00 to 4:00. And also, our Pollinator Palooza will be Friday, July 12th. You can celebrate the pollinators that keep our world blooming with a fun, educational event for all ages. Bring your pups and celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month at Party at Pittner. This will be Tuesday, July 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. You can unleash the fun with activities, puparuzzi photos, adoptable dogs, and vendors booths. The event will be held at Pittner Road Dog Park at 2450 Pittner Road Northwest in Acworth. For more information, you can call 770-528-8890. And lastly, happy 4th of July. Every year, Americans look forward to the 4th of July. Independence Day is the birth of our nation. Happy birthday, America.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go to Commissioner Allen.
All right, thank you. Just want to make sure everyone's aware that we have a new way to communicate with our district and constituents. There's a podcast that launched last week. We're going to have another one coming up. We will still be doing the newsletter, but this is a different way to reach out, communicate, and hopefully have better dialogue with constituents. You can go to the next slide. The next episode will be released next week. It'll be an interview with Mike Plant to talk about the All-Star Game and all the festivities that will be going on. We are excited because the eyes of the world will be on Cobb County, and we are going to represent and show well. There are a lot of events, and we're going to talk about how every member of the community can be engaged in the All-Star festivities, and we hope that you do take time to come to the Battery, enjoy the event, and bring family. And also, this weekend is Smyrna Pride. It's going to be this Saturday, June 28th, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Smyrna Village Market. This is a family-friendly festival, and will be packed with vendors, live entertainment, and activities for all ages, so come out and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will now turn to Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. Well, we had a presentation earlier today on the budget for 2026 fiscal year, and we will be having three public hearings prior to the vote. Tuesday, July 8th, at our 9:00 a.m. BOC meeting. Wednesday, July 16th, at a special called 6:30 p.m. Meeting. And Tuesday, July 22nd, at our 7:00 p.m. Meeting prior to the vote that night. You can view the meetings at cobbcounty.gov/cobbTV, and you can go to cobbcounty.gov/finance/budget for the full budget online. Cobb Animal Services has a special June adoption. If you bring through the end of June, when you donate unopened and unexpired cat or dog food, your adoption fee is waived. That means you help feed hungry pets and take one home for free. So let's empty the shelter and fill some bowls. More information can be found at cobbcounty.gov/pets. And happy 4th of July. County offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. You can come and join the parade and see all of us on our float and celebrate. Also, you heard earlier from some of the speakers about the fireworks, and there are special designated holidays where fireworks can be discharged until midnight, July 3rd and 4th. And outside of the designated holidays, the fireworks are permitted, are not permitted after 9:00 p.m. So you can view Georgia Code Section Regarding Fireworks at OCGA 25-10-2, and pyrotechnics are prohibited at all county parks, per County Ordinance 90-63. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. District Four News and Updates. Library Mini Golf is back with an extra day added this year. Join Cobb County Libraries for a unique and fun family adventure at South Cobb Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Arts Center and North Cobb Libraries, respectively, on July 8th, 9th, and 10th. Sponsorships are available on a first-come, first-served basis. Your company will be advertised all three days at each hole and hole flag on library monitors in July and August, and on library social media platforms. The event is a great way to support our summer reading program and have fun. If you're interested in purchasing a sponsorship, please visit 2025minigolf.givesmart.com. The 5K Run, Walk, and Stroller Roll is a fun, family-friendly event that promotes health, fitness, and community connection. Hosted by It Starts With Me Too, this race encourages participants of all ages and fitness levels, including those with strollers, to come together for movement and motivation. It's more than just a race, it's a celebration of wellness and togetherness. The event is scheduled for Saturday, July 12th, at 8:00 a.m. Check-in begins at 6:30 a.m. at the Epi Center, located at 135 Riverside Parkway in Mableton. Use code COB to receive $10 off registration when registered by July 5th, 2025. And finally, Cobb County Senior Services is excited to partner with the Georgia Council on Aging to host Engage With Co-Age. During these informative sessions, you'll learn about recent legislative outcomes that impact seniors' healthcare, housing, and safety, safety and rights. You'll also hear updates from the Georgia Council on Aging and the Coalition of Advocates for Georgia's Elderly. Most importantly, you'll discover how to get involved and make your voice heard on issues that matters most. Sessions will be hosted at various senior centers, with the kickoff event on July 10th at Freeman Pool Senior Center, located at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Call 770-801-3400 to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all for joining us this evening. We hope you all have a wonderful July 4th. Our meeting is now adjourned.